We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Monmouth County Commission for December 30th, 2020. It is 10 o'clock and all the commissions are present and we'll begin with consent and approval. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning. We have no exonerations. Minutes for December 23rd, 2020. Vouchers: General County Fund, $211,045.68. Cole Severance, $36,438.08. Magistrate Court, $101.11. 911, $74.92. Mason Dixon Park, $263.43. Purchasing Card vouchers: General County Fund, $1,008.6938. For a voucher total of $249,791.60. We have physician vacancies for boards and authorities. The Western -- here, I did it again. Monmouth County Planning Commission, Monmouth County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Abandon and Dilapidate Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, Region Six Planning and Development Council, Historic Landmarks Commission, Mountaineer Trail Network Authority. Fiduciary orders for December 30th, 2020. And then we also have two recommendations from two of your fiduciary commissioners on separate estates.
Handle the consent agenda first. Move to approve?
Second.
And properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
And the fiduciary orders.
Okay, so your first is in the Louis -- or I'm sorry, Arthur P. Scottville Estate. Your fiduciary commissioner has recommended that you all approve the Keith Papas's, who was the former administrator, his fourth and final accounting, and that the current administrator, CTA Judge Larry Starcher, you redact, or he asked him to redact his accounting and...
Move that we accept the fiduciary commissioner's recommendation?
Second.
Properly moved in second for accepting this recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the second is the estate of James Hugh Wiley. Do you want to handle the...
Try and explain it and...
Yeah, this one...
There's several things at the end.
Yeah, because our fiduciary commissioner, what, there was a, a final settlement was filed and then there was an objection to the final settlement that has never really been addressed. And then there were some other actions. So she's recommended three things. Reject the final settlement filed by James T. Wiley. Require James T. Wiley to carry out his statutory and lawful duties, including filing accurate Form 6.02 and providing all documentation information of the estate of Ann Wiley as in Title II within 10 days. And then the third action is considering the pending motion to remove executor and allow it to be heard. I think we only have one action here and I would recommend that we accept the first recommendation, which is to reject the final settlement filed by James T. Wiley. And I'd like to make that one motion.
Yeah, second that.
Properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then the second recommendation from her, basically by us rejecting this final, this proposed final settlement filed by Mr. Wiley, then it, then we as a commission, I guess she's asking we as a commission to basically require James T. Wiley to carry out his statutory and lawful duties and do all that within 10 days. And I would also agree with that, that we, so I'm sorry, I did say we only accept one of the recommendations. We accept two of the recommendations to require him to fill out his lawful duties within 10 days.
Second with clarification.
Okay.
Just so we have it, when does the 10 days begin? Does it begin today? So that way...
I would say it would begin today.
Okay, I just, that case says clarification, okay.
And that's business days, correct?
Business days.
Exactly, okay.
So we have the holidays there and then you have to consider that there are two federal holidays because New Year's Eve is a holiday, right?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, so basically we begin next...
So you figure out, figure out the time schedule. Then the last issue was consider the pending motion to remove executor and allow it to be heard.
We need to vote on the second one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So then the third one is consider the pending motion to remove executor and allow it to be heard. Well, if he does his job, then it might be a moot point, so I don't, I think we should table that for now.
Wait, hold on.
Okay. Anything else on fiduciary orders?
No, that's all.
Introduction of new employees. I see we have Juan Caitlin Copenhaver, KSA Drug Screening Technician, part-time for the day report center.
Yes, she will be part-time and her rate of pay will be $11 per hour, no benefits. She has a probation period of 90 days from her start date of January 4th.
Move for approval.
Second.
And properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
I don't see any others, but are there any other introductions?
No, sir.
Comments from the public are now open. Were comments from the public, anybody wishing to come forward and speak is now invited. We are now closed for comments from the public. I don't see Colleen here. Do we have any grants, Renata?
Not that I know of, no.
Okay. Any unfinished business?
You missed correspondence.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correspondence, yes.
That's okay.
Oh, yes, and that's a big one. Okay. Sorry.
All right. I want to present to you this morning the 2020 year-end report. Sometimes we do this the last meeting of the year, sometimes we do it the first meeting of the new year, so with your all's help, we have this completed. We changed the format. Usually we do a month-by-month kind of overview, but we've changed that a little bit. We have a highlight section, approved supplemental funding section, and ongoing initiatives section. Just running through some of these highlights. Commissioner Hawkins was elected president for calendar year 2020. Prepared and approved the fiscal year 21 budget of $37,761,848, which was an increase of 1.62 over fiscal year 20. Decreased county levy rate by 2.3%. Proactively adjusted both revenue and expense accounts to account for COVID-19. Funded multiple contingency accounts, general fund, fully funded, legal, and financial stabilization. Placed funds aside for broadband planning, COVID-19 response funding, new Mecca 911 building, other county-wide capital improvements, backup of IT infrastructure, increases in group health insurance costs. The Monmouth County 4-H and Extension Services Building was opened. Signed an MOU with Mylan Park Foundation to manage the building. WVU Extension Services completed their move-in in January of 2020 and we signed a 10-year lease with the West Virginia Department of Agriculture. Approved the placement of four excess levies to be placed on the May 2020 primary election ballot and were subsequently approved by the residents of Monmouth County. Approved additional bond issuances for the University Town Center Property and Sales Tax Increment Financing Districts for expansion of the development. Approved an interchange collaboration agreement along with the West Virginia Department of Transportation and In-Route Properties for the development of a new interchange on I-79 at Harmony Grove. The installation of metro ethernet and internet services for county facilities. We provided pay increases to county employees. Approved payment and lieu of taxes agreements with Mountain State Clean Energy and Mountain State Renewables to expand the current Longview site for natural gas and solar energy production. Approved first-of-its-kind collaboration resolution between the Monmouth County Commission and the Monmouth County Board of Education. Improvements to county parks. Settled the lawsuit with West Virginia, or I'm sorry, with Monmouth County Development Authority. And Catherine's Knob Tower demo and replacement. Approved supplemental funding, Mid-Ohio Valley Regional Council, Visit Mountaineer Country CVB, Monmouth County Classic Baseball Tournament, Arts Manongahela, Meals on Wheels, Pantry Plus More, and the Monmouth County Board of Education for food insecurity programs due to COVID-19. Little Creek Public Service District for emergency waterline repairs. Upper Manongahela River Association, Stewartstown Community Council, Morgantown Utility Board for Hazardous Waste Collection Day. West Virginia Black Bears for Dynamic Baseball Tournament. Monmouth County Health Department, the hire of an additional sanitarian, a one-time non-base building supplemental pay, additional funding of COVID-19-related expenses. West Side Senior Center and Triune Community Center. Ongoing initiatives, obviously COVID-19 pandemic response, cooperation with other governmental bodies, countywide broadband, expansion of the Tiff districts, other extension building improvements, improvements to county parks and county facilities, capital improvements, and development of a long-range plan. I'm sure you all have comments.
Go ahead, Tom.
No, no, go ahead.
All right, well, I just wanted to make some notes. I did make some notes as Renata was reading these off. In regards to the budget, when we talk about we proactively adjusted our revenue accounts and our expense accounts, I mean, it's important that we have realistic projections. So sometimes that's always hard on the revenue side, but we adjusted our revenues specifically like the CVB because we knew we were going to have less income coming in. Alcohol sales, we knew that was going to affect us. So we affected a lot of, we did down, down, place a lot of the revenue accounts and obviously then the expense accounts with the expenditures. Expenditures that we, but also taking into account, we had a pretty, pretty robust effort to get reimbursed for a lot of those expenditures through the CARES Act funding, so, and we've been pretty, pretty successful with that. Renata mentioned the installation of the metro ethernet and internet services for county facilities. That was the DQE where we connected all of our buildings via fiber. So that's just part of the whole consolidation and backup of the IT services and then the connectivity between the buildings. And that's kind of, you know, the start of the whole countywide connecting everything. With, obviously with, most recently with the payment and lieu of tax agreements, again, I want to point out that we're keeping 98.3% of those dollars into county as opposed to 69% under the previous agreement. And the collaboration agreement is just a piece of paper that we've put on, we've put our thoughts into in regards to how we're going to work with the Board of Education, but the citizens need to take note that these two organizations are working together for the betterment of all of our citizens. So that's a very important thing and as that, as we go forward and as that project develops and we start seeing the actual income from that project, the citizens should take note that, you know, we're all working together. Improvement to county parks. Each, each commissioner is responsible for a park, but overall, we've done a good job of improving each of our county parks. The park that I oversee, Mason Dixon Historical Park, has seen four, four times the visitors that we've seen pre-pandemic. I mean, everybody's getting out and walking with what JR had done with the ferry door trails. And a lot of his continuous improvement of the actual trails is remarkable because, I mean, he's, he's done that on, you know, that's just labor. I mean, he hasn't really, hasn't really cost the county much, but it, you know, it's exponentially improved, you know, the amenities at that park. Chestnut Ridge Park, Tom, obviously you have the snow, the snow tow rope and the snowmaking that we purchased last year. And then we have some things coming up with Muffley. We have the pool RFP, which we haven't, we haven't finalized yet, but hopefully that there'll be some improvements that are going to happen in the next couple of months or at least start. The lawsuit with the Development Authority, that may sound like a negative, but I think it was really important, you know, that lawsuit wasn't the fault of any, anyone on this commission. And it wasn't really the fault of, it was oversight where the Development Authority wasn't included when we changed insurance companies. And that happened 11, 12, 13 years ago. But getting that behind us and really paves the way for a lot more collaboration with our Development Authority or just removes that, you know, the fact that the two entities were technically suing each other, you know, that removes that. So that's very important that we've got that taken care of and I'm, you know, I appreciate my commissioners and the Development Authority to working to that end, to get it off the table. And anytime you have an agreement where both sides walk away that thinking they could have gotten a better deal, it's probably, probably a pretty good agreement. The Catherine's Knob Demo and Replacement, that was something that, you know, came up. We acted on it when we, we were getting reports that there, that the, you know, there was an issue and as the issue progressed. We didn't wait. We acted. I mean, we could have been criticized if we got rid of a perfectly good tower, but we, we listened to the experts and when, when we brought the tower down, it was evident that we had catastrophic failure this winter as soon as the, you know, everything started freezing because the, it was just in such bad shape. So I'm glad we did that, but we were also proactive in putting the agreements in place to construct the new tower. So appreciate everybody's help on that. The Little Creek Public Service District, that we were, that's not, that's not our PSD. That's a Marion County PSD, but it affects about 70 of our residents if that water line were to be disrupted. So we worked together to, to provide a reasonable amount of funding to them to fix that line. And, you know, again, the citizens should take note that, you know, we're working within our county and out with others around our county to, for the betterment of our citizens. The Health Department, obviously, the support of the Health Department was probably one of the most, biggest accomplishments of this year. How our Health Department was front and center, how we were, you know, thinking outside the box and taking measures to try to protect our citizens. And so I want to commend Dr. Smith and all of his staff. The broadband initiative, I hope citizens see a lot in regards to that in the upcoming year. We may not, some of the changes may not be made by then, but they'll at least, hopefully we'll have a plan so that we have a defined schedule for when we're going to be making some of these improvements. And some of the capital improvements, unless you look really close at our budget, you wouldn't notice that we budgeted a 12% increase for capital improvements over previous years. And we're, we're investing in the future. We're investing in our facilities. We're investing in, you know, making sure Bobby and his staff, making sure that we keep our facilities up. And I think that's very important. Then the last thing I want to talk about is the COVID-19 response. I hear all the time that we really don't have power to do a lot, but we really do. We have power to bring people together and power to communicate and, and to that end, that was probably the most successful effort of this past year is bringing people together, communicating, speaking in one voice, letting our professionals provide, the Health Department provide guidance and then working with them to carry out their guidance. So I think that was a really important thing and we've done it in the past with, you know, with the EMT consolidation, with the work that we did to bring the Aquatic and Track Center. You know, it's important that we work together, just like we're going to be working together with the Board of Education with, you know, to the benefit of all the citizens. So you asked, so those are my comments.
Tom?
Yeah, there are many success stories that we could go into and I don't need to reiterate what Sean said, but there is one area that I do want to agree with and really explain and that was what COVID-19 did was it brought to focus some deficiencies that we have in the county. And I'm thrilled to say that the statement where we have cooperation with other government bodies, and I like to just add the word "and agencies" to it, to explain that what we did was, I think the greatest success was that when we saw an emergency, it was less than 24 hours where we were able to get WVU or the Board of Ed or the City of Morgantown, the different cities, the Health Department, together to come up with a solution. And I think that is what I'm most proud of, is that we as the three county commissioners were able to organize, get it together, and come up with some sort of a plan. And when people talk about government moving slowly, we disprove that statement. And I, and that to me, of all the things we did, is the most important and I'm looking forward for the future with that.
No, that's a perfect example, Tom. And we had conversations where I personally was sitting in the middle of the ocean, talking with, with you guys, the judges, you know, when we, we had potential exposures in the...
Courthouse.
In the courthouse. So we really were, and we, it was regular. It was Sunday nights, it was Saturdays, it was weekends, it was holidays. It was, you know, if something needed to be discussed, we got on it and we had those conversations.
And to add, all three commissioners never once had a complaint, whether you were like in the ocean or we had to call Ed up and he had an operation, but we had, he had to get information. I mean, those are the things that made, I think, us successful and I really appreciate my colleagues jumping on that at early 7:00 in the morning till 10, 11 o'clock at night. In fact, I told Ed that my biggest fear was when Sean sent us a note at 10 or 11 o'clock at night because usually he doesn't do that unless there was a situation coming up. So I'll, I'll be quiet now. Go ahead.
I will not try and repeat what has been said. It has been an exemplary year. So we'll proceed from there to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
No, sir.
We'll go to new business. To consider for approval, requisition number 42 for the University Town Center Series 2017 Administrative Expense Fund.
The requisition is for $2,237.50 and those funds will be paid to MuniCap for their services to the district.
Move to approve requisition 42 as presented?
Second.
Been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other new business?
No. But I do have a couple of items of more correspondence.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You all received a card of thanks from the Health Department, signed by eight people, just thanking you for your support over the last year and wishing you all a healthy, happy, and safe holiday. And also, last week, I read into the correspondence a letter from Ed Cosner regarding his term on the Development Authority. You all accepted his resignation last week. On Monday, I received another letter from Mr. Cosner. Says, "I am requesting that I be considered to serve an additional term on the Development Authority. Previous correspondence of December 12th indicated that I wanted to resign. Due to health reasons, I had just been released from the hospital and was feeling very ill. However, the past week, recuperation and great medical care have helped me gain my stamina back. I appreciate your consideration of my request to serve another term." So...
Okay, well, we're probably in the, probably not next week, but the, the next meeting will be re-upping the terms of a few others that had expired, so we'll take that letter and advisement because the way we, the process is, is we share with the executive board of the Development Authority. We'll share that with them if they have any feedback and then we'll put that on the agenda. Again, it probably won't be next week, it will probably be the following week because that will still be in time for our next Development Authority meeting, so...
I agree.
So we just put it in a pile of the ones to be considered.
Any other correspondence?
No, that's all I have.
Commissioners?
No.
Okay. Reports from elected officials. I don't see any elected officials here, so we'll go to reports from county commissioners and begin with Sean.
Okay, well, I've already talked enough. Obviously, there's not a lot of meetings due to the holiday. I do want to, you know, as you can see from the report, as you can see from every year's report, it's usually a lot that we have our hand in during the year. And I want to say that specifically to Commissioner Hawkins, this is your last meeting, I want to thank you. This has been a very successful, this current iteration of the commission has been very successful and you should be proud of your service. We should all be proud of our service. But again, it's a team, you know, everybody's opinions help form every action that we do. This isn't a, a commission that's driven by any one individual. It's driven by three individuals working together and it's really a politics-free zone. We don't, politics don't come into our decisions. It's what's best for the citizens. And we don't rubber stamp things. We do have, we do have agreements and as I pointed out on numerous occasions, in my four years on the commission, we've only had six votes, six total votes where we weren't unanimous. So, and again, there was, really none of those were, there was only one that could be considered a real policy disagreement. Most of the others were formalities and personal, personal opinions that, you know, if it was, if a vote was needed and it was something we really needed, it probably wouldn't have went down that way. So anyhow, I do want to thank you for your service. The citizens owe you a great thanks and you set a high bar for when Jeff comes in to take your seat. And hopefully, as a commission, we can continue to work for, for all of our citizens.
Thank you. Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, two quick issues. One, I wanted to thank my colleague, Ed Hawkins, who I've worked with for the past six years. And I just want, an anecdote, I do remember his name. The first meeting, I completely forgot who he was and I apologize, so I've learned to say your name correctly. But he has put the interests of the county first and has been a strong vocal spokesperson for subdivision regulations, 4-H programs, Camp Muffley, and agriculture. And again, I want to thank Ed. People do not realize his service dedication and commitment to our county, that it isn't just a one-hour meeting. And I said, and this year really proved the three of us working at times 18, 20 hours a day and never once complaining and kept trying to get the best interests of the citizens for it. And for that, we will miss you. And I just want to wish everyone a happy New Year with that.
Thank you. I'll be a little bit more verbose now.
Okay.
I want to begin by thanking all the officers that it's been my pleasure to serve with, and it has been. I want to thank the judges, even though one deemed me arbitrary and capricious. And a special thank you to the magistrates, especially the late Herschel Mullins. Our court security, you've been exemplary during my term in office. All the employees and all the offices deserve a special thank you and credit for making our county unmatched in the state of West Virginia. Our deputies, my thanks for being responsive and making us safe. To Jimmy Smith and our 911 center and response teams, you've always kept us informed and prepared for the emergencies that ensued. I've made a lot of friends as a county commissioner. Now, to the press that has covered us, Channel 5 TV, Channel 12 TV, Sunshine Wiles, Dave Wilson, and Sarah Giocci of WAJR, thank you. A special thanks to Ben Conley of the Dominion Post for his always honest coverage. All of you, as well as Kay Murray and the late Jim Stallings deserve my thanks. Renata, I can't thank you enough. You're the glue that holds this commission together. Colleen, you're not here, but hiring you was a stroke of genius. You always made everyone smile. So we actually assembled, I think, the perfect working team and administration with these two ladies and Jenny as a backup. On the day I took office, I shook the hands of Bobby Doyle. Bobby, we became fast friends and through all the building projects on the past six years, I can't thank you enough. You have always looked out for every endeavor that county commission has been involved in. So thank you. I personally mean that from the bottom of my heart. To all your staff in construction and maintenance, the motor pool, the litter control, the Canine Adoption Center, whom I never visited because I knew I couldn't, but Dana, thank you all. To Mike and Danny back there, you faithfully recorded and edited us so that we might find us on YouTube for eternity. Thank you for making us look good, or at least as good as you possibly could. To my fellow commissioners, including Eldon Callan, Sean Sikora, and Tom Bloom, who have served with me, I make this statement. This was the best-assembled and elected commission in over 30 years, not because I served on it, but because there was never an odd man out. I believe this is true friendship when we have worked for Monmouth County, not for individual recognitions. Sean, I had no idea who you were when you were elected, but thank you because you are the rock of direction. Words can't thank you enough for continuing to keep us on course. Tom, we began as polar opposites, who were actually just like each other. I've often stated that you got tired of saying, "I hate to say it, but Ed's right," and finally would say, "Ed's right." The friendship that you see between all of us is genuine. It's been my pleasure to serve with both of you, all of you, especially Sean, because you had to put up with the pot and the kettle, okay? Tom and I, we recognize what we are. Lastly, I want to thank... Lastly, I want to thank the citizens of Montague County. You allowed me to fulfill this destiny of public service as your county commissioner the past six years. I always told my dental patients little stories to amuse them. So I'll, I'll finish with this story. I had a gentleman, Dr. Laslow Vorse, he's not alive anymore. But he was a minister. And I, when I was dismissing him, after checking him, I said goodbye. And he recoiled in horror. And I looked at him, I said, "What's wrong?" He goes, "You never say that word." I said, "Goodbye?" He goes, "No. You never say that word. You say 'till we meet again, 'till the next time.'" And I looked at him and I said, "Dr. Vorse, are you a man of the cloth, superstitious?" And he said, "It's not superstition, it's just common sense." So I shall follow his direction, as I did with every other patient when they were leaving my care, going, moving somewhere else. I would tell them that story and say, "Thank you. Until I see you again." I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.